I just didn't say he wouldn't be here, so I expect him to. Do you have any regrets?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Just in time.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say here's the one that you were coming to the last.
Get every stop with.
Yeah, sure. So how much snow is coming?
None.
You don't think so?
Didn't look like it.
Didn't work.
Didn't look like it.
Um, well, I just saw another forecast that came up and they're saying a little bit more now, so that makes me nervous.
Oh, they got.
They'll do that until it's supposed to start and then it'll just go away.
I hope so.
The votes are just not.
I guess. Yeah, no, that's the key.
Beacon is having issues tonight.
Oh, you gotta click on parcels when they're on the left. Right down, right there where it says parcels, yeah, and then click on the one you want.
I was doing it earlier, it came right up. That's weird.
All right, seven o'clock, so we can call the meeting to a halt, roll call when we're ready.
Can I have you turn your microphones on too, please?
All right.
Barkle.
Here.
Loost.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
All right, everybody's present. Everybody got a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting? Unless there's any changes, I need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Loost.
Second, Nelson.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Are there anything, any items to be added to the agenda? Any changes to the agenda?
No.
All the plats and everything stay on this thing? Okay. Unless anybody else has got something, I need a motion to.
I'd like a couple minutes at the end, Chris, won't take very long.
Okay. Add a few minutes at the end for Dennis. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, Loost.
Second, Michael.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Right, motion carried. Uh, we can do conflict of interest declarations, or with Kathy?
None.
None, Kettering none.
Barkle, none.
Loost, none, Nelson, none.
Michael, none.
Bark, none.
All right. First agenda item scheduled for seven oh five, got a few minutes, can we squeeze in some plats?
Yeah, we can do the list one first. This is just south of three fourteen, this was all one parcel. And they're biting it up for the chi- the kids. So we have one parcel here, that's twenty acres, one here that's twenty. And this one was not quite twenty, but the owner of this one is also the owner of this, so they took a little bit out of that to make it twenty acres. So they're all conforming.
Is this, what zone is this in?
Um, rural transitional.
Okay. Are they planning to build homes on this?
Um, not on this one, she owns this property and there used to be a home on this. And she's going to apply for, as applied for a condition to use permit to put the home back up here, but that's.
Okay.
Where's this at?
Just south of thr- uh, three fourteen. Here are those lots that.
Okay, so that's where there's like a farm place there next to.
Well, this is where the, there's a new house here. Going up, and this is a, the string of houses on the door side here.
Yeah.
See if I can.
The old Bob List land, isn't it?
Yes. It's right in this area.
I just like for a school teacher.
Right here.
He was a male character, or male character.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure they were aware they have to have a CUP for a house.
Yes.
Okay.
Do all those lots have access then?
Yes, on the, on the plat, it shows.
Kind of a weird one.
On the, right here along the east side.
And then it cuts over.
Yep.
So it goes all the way down to his property. And it, they wanted to go over here, but the s- uh, state would not let them, so that's why they went down here, cut over and down here.
Gotcha.
So there's access to all of them. And the.
Yeah.
So they're good there.
Well, unless anybody has anything to add, it looks conforming to me, so. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Michael, motion to approve.
Second, Loost.
All right, uh, you wanna do a roll call vote?
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Right, motion carried, we're at seven oh four, probably can't get another one in there, so. Oh, seven oh five, so we can do the Maybaum rezone. Applicant is requesting rezone, to rezone a lot in moderate density rural residential district R two to a low density rural residential district R one for Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine and Article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said property is legally described as block nine deer run subdivision located in the east half of the southwest quarter and the west half of the southeast quarter, section one township ninety three north, ranch fifty seven west of the fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
Also, Maybombs want to rezone to low density residential, as you can see their parcel is the one outlined in red and has a cursor on it. They're over seven acres, I believe. And they wanna do this so they can have more flexibility to do what they want with the property, build a bigger accessory structure and apply for a hobby farm in the future. And I will note that the property adjacent to it on the east currently has a hobby farm CUP. And they're basically surrounded by low density residential.
Yeah, the one right to the east was what we approved last year, I believe, or two years ago?
A couple years ago at least, yeah. Just kidding farms.
Uh, do you guys wanna come up and add anything?
I mean, I need to say this exactly what we were gonna say, so I don't know if you have questions or anything like that. Our idea is like, we noticed that if you have the low density, your shed can be slightly higher, which would be very appealing, like if we go to sell the property to somebody that has a camper or boat.
Why don't you come up to the.
Okay.
So everybody can hear on the radio.
My name is Andrea Maybaum, live at four three three four eight three hundred and tenth street. The reason we're looking at this is we'd like to go, I think you can go about two feet higher on the sidewalls of a shed with the low density ruling, and we'd like that, so if you wanna put a camper in the shed or a boat, like if we'd ever sell the home, I don't know that we'll ever own a sailboat, but somebody after us might, so. I'd rather do it right, right away than regret it later, so.
Anybody have any questions for? Thank you. Oh, shed with the sidewalls sixteen foot, that's just a building permit, right, or is that?
In low density, it's a building permit, in moderate, it's a condition to use permit, same with the square footage, they're allowed about sixteen or four- fourteen or sixteen hundred more square feet in low density than moderate. But they also, I think mentioned about wanting to maybe get a, have a hobby farm at some point, which they're not allowed to apply for in moderate density, but they are in low density.
Okay. I guess I'll just ask for public comment, I don't see any. All right, we'll close public comment. I guess, anybody have anything to add to this, to me, I guess it looks like it fits the area, it's conforming even in R one.
Do we need to walk through the?
Yeah, we should probably go through.
Rezone.
Checklist. Okay, so we have the completed, uh, rezone request. Conditions to require the rezones to allow structures to be built. That would be conforming. And also potential for future use of the property. To be conforming. Current zone doesn't allow intended future use.
I'm sorry?
The current zone doesn't intend the.
Doesn't allow.
Doesn't allow the intended future use.
Correct.
Um, it's not gonna confer any special privileges, the whole area around it, looks like it's pretty much R one. Have notice, we're at the hearing. Anything in the checklist you think we hadn't gone over?
Really, a change in rezone doesn't change anything with ingress, egress, off, right of way, parking, refuse, et cetera, screening utilities. So those really don't apply.
Right.
I see no reason not to approve. Any other discussion before I make a motion? Motion to approve the rezone based on findings of fact.
Second.
All right, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Get hold of me tomorrow and I'll explain the next step.
All right.
Good luck.
Yep, thanks.
Were, were you in Nebraska with that lady?
She, he was.
You were.
I was from Gayville.
Uh, Gayville.
Yet halfway.
Was Conrad a relative?
That's my dad.
Oh.
He's an osteo right now.
Oh, really, is he seriously ill?
Uh, he's losing blood, so it's, it's getting better.
Sorry to hear that. I met him forty years ago. In Farm Credit.
What's that?
He, I was in Farm Credit when he was there.
Oh.
So, yeah, good guy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on the chop plot.
Just, it's just south of the red.
Yeah.
In there, yep.
Well, he's actually, it's this little parcel.
Yep.
His father owns this large parcel there, so it's a nonconforming agricultural lot. And he's adding to that, on his current property, he has no room to build any accessory buildings, with the fifty foot setbacks, he has no room. So he's adding on to the west to give him more room to build an accessory structure. So it's becoming more conforming.
Getting closer to be conforming.
Yep.
How much did they add to it?
Um, they probably doubled the size, I think it was about, let's see here.
That's one point five two two.
One point five existing.
Yeah, whoever's at is not perfect.
They kinda doubled it.
So they doubled it.
Yep.
And the other lot took out of it is plenty big still, so.
I'm sorry?
The other lot that they took it out of is plenty.
Oh, yeah, it's a, it's a large parcel. Right now, it's ninety five acres. So there's ninety three and a half left.
Motion to approve.
Second, Loost.
All right, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay, the Oliver plat.
This is another lot in the development that's just north of Cottonwood. Let's see. Five, six is right there. Make sure where it's at if you'd like. Approximately. I gotta go back this way.
No, you were right right there, yeah.
Yeah, yep, mm-hmm.
It's down there somewhere.
It's kind of a little, see, uh, approximately in here.
This is just a plat of a, of a preliminary plat.
Correct.
Just one lot?
Yes, they kinda do them one at a time as they've got somebody, either they wanna build one or somebody wants to build on it and buy it, so.
Move approval, Loost.
Second, Michael.
All right, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know how to say that name, but.
Bangor Thiest.
Bangor Thiest, okay.
Bangor Thiest.
Yeah.
It's back in here. He purchased one large parcel, and he's dividing it into three. These three, this was, it's currently one parcel, come on, show up there. This one right here. He sold that and he wants to divide it into three lots and sell one off.
All of them will meet the minimum lot size.
So they'll all be just over an acre?
Yes.
One point three se- or eight six, three six, one point two nine four and one point zero zero two.
And they all got a road next to them?
Yes, yes.
So the little weird shaped lot on the south side of them is owned by somebody else then?
Yes.
The southwest side?
Yeah.
Oh, well here?
Yeah.
Yes. But that was a preexisting lot.
That's currently got a house on it, right?
It's pretty isolated.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here, there's a house on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, when you look at that picture.
In fact, this gentleman.
Squeeze three lots in there.
Yeah, this one, this gentleman is gonna buy this lot for a family member.
Move his, move his son next to him.
So.
You were questioning that sliver of the sun, the right of that corner is green?
Right here.
That one, yeah.
Yes.
Huh, well.
There's a lot of odd lots out in that development.
All right. Motion to approve, Loost. Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, the Shank plat.
Let's see.
This isn't the same plat that was in contention the last time you had something, was it?
This is kinda cleaning up. Cleaning up an issue with another parcel. His address. Let's see here. He washed down.
It's over by Hemdes.
Yeah, it's south, just south of him, it's worse, you know what Hemdes is?
Twenty two, isn't it?
What's that?
It's section twenty two, isn't it?
Section twenty two.
Right there.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So, this was all one parcel separated by the road. So they have planted this off to make it its own separate parcel. This one is a little over twenty acres and this one obviously is quite a bit bigger. So it's just separating this off.
And cleaning that up a little bit.
What's in between there, is that a right of way?
Yep, well, that's actually, yeah, it was given to them or sold to them, there's a house right back here. So this, it belongs to them and it, for some reason, they did it so it separated those two lots. So, like I said, it kinda cleans up that a little bit.
So go to the new plat, what do they?
They, they surveyed off this, it's, uh.
I see.
Yeah, twenty one and a half acres. It's not quite square, how to accommodate this property right here, but.
So do, when they do that, do they have to not, right now, is it all platted as one?
I don't think, I don't know if it's platted, but it's all one legal, 'cause it's over a hundred and fifty four, they, they didn't necessarily need to platten it. So, yeah, it's just a, it's just the legal description.
Yeah, 'cause you always have to be careful on Beacon, because I own a large chunk of property and it shows as a large chunk of property, but it's actually got two acre plats that aren't showing here, so I, I was just curious if this is a whole, if this is truly platted with a, a right of way through, or is, is that?
No, they, they own that, this, this parcel owns that right of way.
So that's an owned thing, gotcha.
Yeah.
So you don't have to show the other, they must not be changing the other plat?
There's, I don't think there is, I mean for this one.
There isn't another plat.
I don't think there is, 'cause it's over twenty acres and it's older, so there's just a legal.
I see. There's just a legal, there's, okay, all right.
Hmm.
That narrow strip is access then?
I'm sorry?
That narrow strip is access that the other people own?
It's access to the back lot, but it's actually part of their property, it's not amusement, they.
And they own it.
Right, yeah, but I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, so they can't take that away, he's got access from there and he's got access from here, so.
And I suppose if he wants to sell that small thing, it probably would be best to have a plat.
I think he could sell it ten times. A lot of people asking about it.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay, Jorgensen plat.
This is like the second plat, the chop plat, he owns a nonconforming lot in an ag district. Needs to put up or wants to put up a ag accessory structure, he didn't have enough room back here, so he purchased this from the neighbor and is replating it to add it to his property. So he's making it closer to conforming and allows him to put an ag accessory structure back here.
So it's currently that roughly ten acres and when it's gonna add to that?
Uh, no.
It'll be ten acres after.
Ten eight, nine point nine seven is what it will be, once the plat is approved. So this, I believe, this is originally, the dotted line is the previous line, he's added this to it to give him more, more room to do things for ag.
Where's it on the plot, Matthew?
On Beacon? Let's see, we are.
Is it Mission Hill, or not Mission Hill, um.
Central.
It's up north, isn't it?
Let's see, central.
There's thirty five.
Now, yeah, thirty five.
Down the nerve someplace.
Yeah.
I'm starting, I was thinking of.
Right here. That's the current parcel. And then he's buying.
Basically the green space?
Yeah, basically adding the trees, maybe a tad more on the west, but basically all of that.
Uh, I think it's getting us closer to conforming, it's better.
Motion to approve Loest.
Second, Michael.
Go ahead.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, onto the ID plat.
All right, this one is a little interesting one. Let's see the. Three oh two five seven. Ooh, that's the wrong one, sorry. So, they have, the family owns two parcels. They had an auction and they're selling at least one of them. But there were issues with the property lines. It was purchased decades ago by a family member and so they had to create a new plat to clean up the discrepancies in the property line. This was already a non-conforming lot at fourteen. We claimed it as the homestead and, and allowed them to minimize it a little just because they needed to clear up that property line issue from the auction. This one is conforming.
So was there like an existing fence that was not in the right place?
Yes.
Okay. So they're essentially using the new, the fence line?
I believe so, yes.
To match the plat?
Yep.
Can you pull it up on beacon?
Both parties agree.
Now, let's see if I can find it.
I can give you the parcel ID.
You got it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Zero three dot zero one zero dot four zero zero dot five hundred.
It's this parcel and this parcel, and this is where the confusion will, I think the driveway is.
So they're pu- essentially putting the driveway in with the homestead, probably?
Yes. You can see right here, they keep a little jog here.
Looks like it's including the driveway.
To allow, allow the driveway to be included.
And then the rest of the line stays roughly where it's at?
This, this line, this line, these will all stay the same. These will all stay the same. It's basically cleaning this line up here.
So that line's just gonna make a jog to include the driveway with the top parcel?
Yeah, and I think they moved it slightly north because of that issue. Looks like this was maybe the original, yeah. So this line is gonna move slightly this way. And maybe that's to compensate for the driveway too, for losing part of that property.
Can you zoom in there? Is there like fence line there on that line somewhere that they're moving to?
I don't, I don't see one.
Or is it just that draw there maybe that they're moving it up to?
Well, I don't, like, maybe I was wrong. He mentioned something about a fence line, maybe he meant the driveway, but I know there were issues.
Well, you see right above the blue line there, there's like a draw and some trees and stuff, so they're probably bumping it up just to make that match the field, the farmable piece below. You see what I'm talking about?
Yep. You're talking to her, Chris.
Yeah, they're probably bumping it up just to that.
Yes. The one that their proposal comes down here and comes up here, so the driveway is into it? Yes. Yes.
So that would put the whole ag field into one parcel and the rest in another.
Yes, makes sense. I think when they did the auction, that's how they advertised and described it.
Described it.
Then they found out, oops, that's not really where the property line is, so they had to do this to make the sale go through, clean it up.
It's still all in the same family though, right?
Uh, well, I think somebody else bought one of them. I think maybe the south piece. And that's why they had to do it, because he wouldn't move forward. I think one of the family members owns the north piece. Yep.
Click on the north piece. So that's fourteen point seven and we're actually making it smaller?
Yeah, and we put the homestead on there because we had to get this cleaned up for them. So they used their homestead exemption to allow them to cut a little off. 'Cause they could've, with the house, they could've gone to two acres if they wanted to, if they were truly doing a home, a farmstead. So we thought, allowing them to decrease it. I don't know, is it even an acre? This is fourteen point seven.
Thirteen point six five, so just a little over an acre.
Just allow them to clean it up.
But by moving that line, you are including all the whole homestead with driveway and everything in there?
Yep. So that exemption is gone. They can't do it again. Motion to approve.
Second.
I do, I, I think we need to be careful when we do this, because when you think about that homestead exemption, you are looking at the lot your house is on. And splitting that off and making a conforming lot and potentially a non-conforming lot. We're not doing that here. So I think we have to be careful with doing this in the future. Because what we're doing is we're robbing from another parcel and then making the lot overall smaller. We just need to be careful with doing that.
So if they wanted to use the homestead exemption and just plot off a couple acres around the actual.
I think I spoke, I think Sherry's right. We couldn't do that, 'cause you'd create a non-conforming.
Okay.
You don't have twenty acres left.
And if they'd have just said, we want to redraw this, we would've said no, but because there was the issue with the property line to clean it up for the sale, we thought it was a valid request.
So give me if you're, if I'm right on this, then Sherry, what you're saying is you're, we're taking a non-conforming lot and making it more of a non-conforming lot by adding, by changing the boundaries or whatever?
Well, we're, we're saying we can do this because of the homestead exemption, and the homestead exemption should only apply to the top lot. And essentially you would split the house off in that lot and make two out of the top. That's, that's what the homestead thing is for. But the problem with that, you can't use that on tract one there, because you don't, you're not splitting the house off and leaving a twenty-plus acre lot. You know, if you had a hundred and sixty acres and you were chunking off your two acres for your house, you'd have two acres and a hundred and fifty-eight acres. That's what the homestead exemption is for. Here, so in that case, you couldn't even look at tract two for that. Nothing. So here, what they're doing is they're, they're taking two plats, two essentially parcels, and we're gonna end with two parcels, but we're making one even less conforming. Is, is only, that's my only point on that, and I know it's only an acre. But it's just something to keep in mind. Technically, they should've checked this before they sold it.
I'm looking for the farmstead exemption language. What section is that again?
Should be in article five.
Five oh, five thirteen? It should say on the plat here.
It's about page fifty-two.
Uh, it's in five thirteen, say it, five thirteen.
Yep. So all it says in there is the zoning administrator may allow a smaller minimum lot requirement where established single-family home exists or where permit for a single-family home is requested on an existing farmstead site. There's an existing home there, right?
Yeah.
Is there any more clarity anywhere else in the zoning ordinance talking about that?
Not that I'm aware of.
So technically, it does fall into the confines of the section five thirteen?
So, to, just to kick that can a little bit more, if we had a five-acre lot in an ag zone, had a home on it, and I come into you and say, I want to split this in half, so there's two and a half acres here with the house, and then I have another two and a half acres, would you let me do that?
That is the issue.
Exactly. So, because then I could sell it and someone else could build a house there, whereas it's in an ag zone. I mean, we, we struggle with this in ag property anyway, allowing people to build homes. One could argue, that's really good, 'cause you've got more people and you're not increasing your footprint. You know, you could sell it a mile down the road and you increased your footprint of a residence, but, so.
I guess if you.
An example of that's what's happened to us, right across the road from us up there, where the guy came in for a farmstead exemption. We granted it because it was, it was like fourteen acres or something like that, it was an old farmstead. But then they quickly deed it, deeded it from the driveway and they took another, took the north part of the property off of that, just sold the house, 'cause the guy didn't want to buy the rest of the land, and then they put another building on that house and there's two guys living in it now, have been there for years already. But that's exactly what happened there, was they, even though the whole property got the farmstead exemption, but the people that bought the house didn't want to buy the excess land, they just wanted the house and the shed. So then they peddled off the rest of it under the table, basically.
And I guess, yeah, I know the intention of it is just to allow a farmstead, and like you're saying, the problems with having the smaller lots and everything. The, the language in here is also, in my mind, leaves some leeway for the zoning administrator may allow a smaller minimum lot, doesn't say you shall allow a smaller lot. So I think it gives us a little bit of flexibility there, 'cause it's hard to come up with every scenario and write it into the.
It is, no, you absolutely can't do that, yeah.
But.
But we have a motion and a second on the table.
Unless there's any more discussion about it, we can vote.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're on to the law plat.
Bill, on that, excuse me, just a second, Chris. On that last plat where you had that beacon up there and it had your, the line of the property that we were talking about, and then the property lines next to it were in orange or whatever color it was, but there was a sliver of land that wasn't included on those boundaries. Where does that?
Um, so this, oh, right here?
Yeah.
It's possible beacon is off. Well, maybe it's a right-of-way, let's see. It's part of this. Here's one of those odd ones where they've got this little swi- and that might be their access. They bought this so they have access to their property.
Don't really look like there's much.
It's like a lot of road.
He's a bicycle to get down there.
Yep, yeah. Some of these lines aren't exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly accurate.
But it does look like that little sliver is part of this parcel, so.
It's a long driveway to remove snow from.
Yeah, let's see if the.
Ride your horse through.
Yeah, so.
Crazy.
So, uh, Miss LaCroix owns this parcel and this parcel, he wants to buy this parcel, so they just surveyed it off. Let me show you on beacon where she's at. There's smoke road. Need a better direction.
To the right, in the blue. Right, to the right a little more, right there.
Going down here again. No.
Yeah, it should be.
Yes, right here. So he owns this one and this one. They've surveyed off this piece up to the road. You see there's a road there? And he's purchasing that. One point nine two acres.
So it stays a separate lot?
Yes. Well, I, I don't know. He may in the future decide to, but as of, for now, it, it will be an individual lot.
And it's got access on that road to the north?
Actually has access on this road and this road.
Or from the south? Oh, oh, okay, yeah. There you go. Move approval, Loest.
A second. Go ahead.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right. Any public comments?
Didn't Dennis want to speak?
Dennis?
It's my turn?
Yep.
Um, I've kind of given this a bit of thought, but, and I kind of give some of you a heads up on it a little bit, but I've been on this board since before its beginning, when it developed and I've kind of, I don't know, this last few years with the things that are going on and it's kind of hard to keep track of all that and keep track of everything else too. I'd like this to be my last meeting. Um, I know the terms are up in June, but I'm gonna, I'm taking back my farmland to farm this spring and I'm gonna be super busy and I'll be seventy in a couple of months and it just, the days get longer. I don't get as much done as I used to.
Seventy's young.
Pardon me?
That's young.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but, but, but the other thing is, you know, the changes and everything that are going on right now, um, with everything, um, I'm not real, I, I guess my thing is, when I kind of lose interest in something, it's time to move out, move away from it and you're not a good participant if you're not engaged in. It's just been, the last couple of years have been really hard to get engaged in some of this stuff when you're overloaded with a lot of other stuff and I think you need to find good blood. This, this is probably, of all the groups I was in, when this inception, from the inception of this thing to now, this is probably one of the best groups of people that broad-minded enough to look at everything. You know, when we started out with thirteen people on the board, it was hard to make a decision on anything. And we sat through a lot of meetings where we had a lot of heated discussion and a lot of heated talk in the hallway and, and things like that and people arrested and all that stuff too, and it's, I'm glad that that's all by us now, but I think we have a really good commission here that, um, senses all this stuff and I, you know, the, there's things I don't agree with, of course, in the ordinance, but that's part of the ordinance. I mean, there's always things that you're not gonna agree with, but I guess one thing is, you know, the interpretation of certain things, how they go and, you know, and what the, what the rule says, but how you interpret that rule is how you gotta kind of look at it too, you know, and, um, you know, we went from having a representative from the state's attorney office at every meeting to answer a lot of questions, because there was a lot of questions, and now, I don't, I don't know, it's been a long time since we had an opinion to have to come back on something and how to do, so, and that's good. If we can keep it out of the courts, it's a lot better than anything, but, but at this point, um, I'm, like I say, this is not gonna be my last meeting and I wish you all the best and I'm sure you'll find somebody to take my place.
Thanks, Dennis.
I think that I, I think that I've been pretty fair. I think that I, I think that I've been pretty fair as far as everything, and I did not get into this thing with an agenda to start with, and I'm not leaving with one, so it's just a matter of, you had to look at everything from a perspective of what would you, how would you want to be treated and how this got to be done, and, and at this point, I'm just ready to step aside and let some new blood into it, so, I want to thank you all, and that's all I have, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
I have a lot of motions tonight.
Loest, still second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright. Posed, we are adjourned. Well, the guy going out is supposed to be here.
Oh, that's right, did you bring the beer?
Alright, Dan, well, thanks for attending.
Yeah. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Yep, good night.